So absurd.
I mean, I've been on it all day. And I get here and it locks down, says sign in required. Uh, she already hit me up. I told her no candy wouldn't work. Do we need to move our table? Note the city made a different arrangement next week.
What? Going back to Lloyds?
Good evening, and welcome to the City Council meeting. The regular meeting of the City Council, City of Trinidad. Today is Tuesday, the June 15th, 2021, at 6:00 PM. Without commander, would you please rise for the pledge of allegiance? Yes, would you please be us?
So moved. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I see we have an audience this evening, and thank you all for being here. Appreciate you guys coming. First time we've had an audience over a year. It's good to see you. Interested people coming to watch us and see what's going on. Roll call?
Call.
Here.
Bell.
Here.
Ranger.
Here.
Alvinson.
Here.
Chu.
Here.
Wangson.
Here.
Rico.
Here. Item two, rule of the agenda. Council have any changes to the agenda they'd like to make? Not called motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call vote please.
Sabara?
Yes.
Bell?
Yes.
Ranger?
Yes.
Alvinson?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Wangson?
Yes.
Rico.
Yes. How do you see policy items and staff reports? Uh, what I wanted to say tonight is I would like to, on behalf of the City Council, our condolences to Kathy's, Falsero's family. She lost three family members within the last month. And I think it would be appropriate to say, give her our condolences. I called her personally myself today, so if you would pass that on to the council, okay? She lost a sister-in-law, a brother, and a sister.
We got disconnected again.
Again. I'm on my own wifi, it's not me.
I don't know, you guys just all disappeared.
Good. It's interesting, everybody's on there, but...
Recording in progress.
Got gone?
Can you hear us, Sandra?
Bar.
Okay.
Get on to item three, policy items and staff reports. Uh, Mr. Valentine on mosquito spraying item A, Health Department. Is Mr. Gonzalez going to be there this night?
Uh, Mayor, I asked the Health Department to be on representatives from, I'm not sure who Mr. Gonzalez said would be on. Uh, just to kind of have a discussion on mosquito spraying. Staff at both the city and the Health Department have been getting many calls, and probably councils, when are we going to spray, when are we going to spray? So there's, there's a lot of calls for spraying, some calls for not spraying, but I believe the Health Department is, according to Ms. Gonzalez, started spraying in the county, so. Is anyone from the Health Department on? Sandra, do you see anybody from Health Department on?
Yes, I asked both of them to unmute, um, and Aaron and Travis and Robbie Tex are both on and they're both unmuted.
Okay. Okay, we'll give you the floor. What, uh, what can you tell us about mosquito spraying?
Um, this is, this is Aaron speaking. We've been spraying, uh, for the last, well, last several years, and we use a product called Anvil 2+2 ULB. We've been spraying in the Hone area, uh, we go up the canyon ways, then we spray in Starkville, and so we spray pretty much all around inhabited areas. And we used the same chemical for many years.
Have you had any requests? I know we did last year. Had one or two people ask us about an environmentally safe mosquito spray. Do you know anything about that? Have you been approached?
We haven't been approached directly that I'm aware of. My predecessor, our predecessor, John Martinez, um, may have been at one point or another, but we haven't been approached with specific questions regarding, um, the types of chemicals we're using. But after doing quite a bit of research on the chemical that we've chosen to use, and in some discussions I've had with the state vector, uh, vector biologist, the state specialist, uh, the chemical that we're using, to the best of our knowledge is, is the best and safest chemical we could use. If it's used properly or, you know, according to the direction typically.
And one of the questions that arose is, I guess, the effectiveness or the, how the effect that it was having on bees. I, I don't know if that's something you see...
The concern of ours, um, they will kill bees, definitely. So, so the way the, uh, the spray works is aerosolized, so it goes into a machine. And then we, uh, as you imagine, uh, it goes into a gas card machine in the back of our truck, and, um, and it slowly speeds to speed all direct to the county, and it is dispersed into areas we still have high concentrations of mosquitoes. It will, um, it could possibly impact these, the, uh, the caveat to that though is that mosquitoes tend to come out at dusk, and, uh, they're most active at dusk if you're gone. Most tend to be times, particularly dusk, mosquitoes aren't as active. So typically, your, your typical bee is looking for the hive prior to getting the card. So we feel pretty comfortable that, um, we spray, we aren't impacting pollinators. Um, and we haven't gotten any complaints, um, as it relates to, to bee die off or colony collapse or anything related to our spraying activities. We also try to communicate with the public in terms of, um, if we can, we try to find out who has hives on a property or in the neighborhood. So we try to avoid those areas, um, and, and that's been our policy all along is to avoid detrimentally impacting pollinators.
I see Ms. Sykes is on. Ms. Sykes, do you have anything to add?
Um, no, just that this particular chemical that we are using is widely used in municipal areas, and it's been used for the last 50 years. So it's, it's a well-provened out chemical. And like Aaron was saying, we're not, we're not getting complaints regarding the bee situation. And as Aaron's also said, um, if you're spraying at those times when bees are going back to their hives, probably not much impact on something like that. So we feel pretty comfortable, and like I said, we've been using it here in our county for probably 15 years. And so, and we feel like it's got a good knockdown. And so we're, we're applying it typically in our areas that we're patrolling probably, um, once a week, once every two weeks, and we're getting pretty good results. And I think the public is pretty happy with that. So that's what I can add. Like I said, we're not getting complaints, and we are aware of where bee hives are where we're spraying. So we make, we're very mindful to, to not do that, turn the sprayer off in those areas. So it's really just being, being aware, doing our duty, doing our research to make sure that we're not impacting those, those populations or people, public, that have those. And if they, if they have them, then they should make that known, and then that could be avoided. So those are just some recommendations that we have.
Let's see if the council has any questions, starting with Mr. Bono.
Yes, uh, there's a lot of cities that are turning towards, uh, have you heard of Wonderside mosquito insecticide? It contains cedar oil and sodium sulfate, sodium chloride, lemon grass oil. And it's, uh, pretty organic and natural, but it seems like the chemical compounds that contain... I'm sorry? The chemical compound that contains the pyrothroid is the one that's toxic to bees and some small birds. That's pretty much the culprit, but the Wonderside mosquito insecticide seems to not be toxic to bees or other insects.
Well, that, our, our product is a pyrothroid derivative, so it, it, I guess the advantage of that is that we do want to knock them down because, you know, people are really complaining that they've got swarming mosquitoes right now.
But you're killing, you're killing the bee population.
Pardon?
With that chemical compound, you're, you're pretty much diminishing the bee population.
Well, we're not really impacting the bee population. As we said, when we're spraying, it's, um, it's at dusk when bees are back in their hives. So it isn't going to go in and, and seek out their hives and, and kill them because we do spray in areas where there are bee hives. But we don't spray right there in their close proximity. So we haven't, right, Aaron, we haven't had that, that complaint regarding the, the problem.
We have no evidence to indicate that we are diminishing the bee population. We haven't received any evidence, and, and speaking to the state vector biologist, uh, as Robin had mentioned, this is used widely nationwide, including California, which is typically quite restricted, but Florida and California and various municipalities across the country use the same, um, same pesticide that we're using. And, uh, nobody seems to be having any, any problems or issues with, again, colony collapse or diminishing populations. Evidence that, that we've seen doesn't seem to support that argument. Uh, as it relates to Wonderside, we can look into it. I am in contact with the, um, our state representative. I can connect with her and find out what she knows about Wonderside. And, uh, we could certainly look into that. We are always and actively looking for more environmentally preferable chemicals to use. And, and so we keep an open mind to that, and I'll connect with her and find out if she's aware of, of this chemical and, you know, what its efficacy is and, you know, what it's, uh, what it promises and what it, uh, what it achieves in terms of its effectiveness.
Any other questions, Mr. Bono?
No, that's... Thank you.
Robin, so I have a question. So if we don't directly spray the bees, they're not in the proximate area when you're spraying, and they're in their hive. Is there any residual damage to them after, uh, any spray that lands on foliage or objects? Do you, would you be aware of that?
So, so there is some, the literature that's out there says there can be some, um, residual, but as long as it's not being sprayed directly on them or while they're active, it doesn't seem to be a detriment to them. You know, we're, we're, we're pretty mindful to be, because people have, you know, have reached out to us and said, hey, I've got these, please don't spray here. And so we are very mindful not to do that. So, um, what we do like is the efficacy of this particular product. And what we probably are more promoting is that, you know, we've been in a pandemic and we have had disease here. And so what we're looking at is a little bit of prevention because right now, our levels of mosquitoes are much higher than they've been in the last couple of years. And so the potential for West Nile to be in this area is, is a little more heightened than it had been in the last couple of years. So, but we're still open, we're, we're not, we're, we're not closed-minded on this. We just want to protect the public because that's what we do at the Health Department. We're into prevention, so. Yeah, any more questions, please feel free to ask.
No, thank you. And you brought up a point that I'm concerned about too because this spring has been unusually moist, a lot of precipitation. And I've noticed the mosquito population, not only are they large in number, the size of these geysers, they could pass for hummingbirds in some places. So, you know, I appreciate that, Robin. Thank you.
So moved.
Uh, Robin and Aaron, are you, do you work for the county? Are you county employees?
We, we are both Inmire Melon Health specialists. I'm the director of Inmire Melon Health, and Aaron is my assistant, right-hand person. So we're both very well schooled on, on science. That's our background, that's why we're in the field. So we do have background, we do our research, um. So hopefully, is that, is that what you're asking?
I was asking just to find out if people do have areas where they have concern because they have hives or some other reason that they don't want spray there. How do they get ahold of you? Do they just call the Department of Public Health, or to whom do they direct that concern?
Um, I, I can answer a little bit of that. In the past, we, we have working knowledge, and so we are aware, um, of folks that have reached out in the past. Last year, in particular in Hone, um, I reached out to Mary Nichols, who is the greenhouse out there, to find out if anybody had any hives or organic crops that they wanted us to avoid. So we have done some outreach. Um, a lot of times it's difficult though to reach everybody that may be, uh, that may have hives or maybe tend to be... So, um, it's always, uh, something we try to do, try to get that outreach out there. But the last thing we want to do is, is spray somebody's hive. So, um, so we have asked, uh, information from various communities to find out who, um, may or may not have hives.
Well, if, if there's someone who wants to get ahold of you both, how do they do that? What number do they call?
Uh, ju- just the direct Health, Health Department number. And they could ask for Rob and my cell, or send us a email. We would be happy to, we would love that. In fact, if, if, in fact, if anybody there in the audience is aware of folks with, um, hives out in Hone, um, have them call us, and so we can, we can, you know, put a big X on the property, so we can avoid their property if we do spray. Uh, but the, the phone number for the Health Department is, uh, 846-2213. Yeah, we, we absolutely would, would love to hear from people that have hives because we don't want to be, uh, uh, partake in that.
All right, thank you.
Health is wasted.
Thanks very much.
Mr. Chu?
Yeah, just a couple. Are you guys, uh, doing some testing to see if there is a West Nile virus in the mosquitoes, as we've done in the past? Do you have traps?
We, we have, we, we've done in the past, we aren't trapping, no, no, we have not, um, uh, we haven't done any trapping. Uh, it's more of a soft, uh, not the best way of describing it. We will get a soft data initially, so we keep in touch with the states and state, you know, uh, representative, our regional representative of, of low. And also, we track, um, the, uh, bird deaths, specifically cubs. So, um, so if anybody sees a crow or a jay that has died of a paranormal causes, we do track that, those tend to be indicator species. So West Nile's really hard on those types of birds. And again, so if anybody in the audience happens to see a, a dead crow or a jay or a...
Maybe a hive.
Yeah, um, have them connect with us, and, um, and then we follow up on that. And that would tend to be sort of a precursor to, uh, maybe having a problem.
Any other questions for Mike? Do, are, are spraying, what do we use if we do it the same as what they have, or is it...
Yeah, I could jump in here now, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead, please.
We use, um, 2020 it's called, and it's, um, my mind went blank there. Sorry, tell us a person. And it's not Anvil 2+2, but it's, uh, a 2020 product that we get from the same supplier. It's tried and tested, uh. We are also doing the Larvicide, where we're putting the donuts and the pellets in the water to, uh, you know, try and get them before they hatch. The, the Larvicide actually stops the production process where they don't, they're unable to fly. Doesn't actually kill them, but it just kind of halts that process, so, you know. I apologize on, on... We, uh, we started this 15 years ago along with the Health Department. When West Nile was pretty prominent, and we began that spraying. That's kind of where we're at this year with the discussion and the calls I'm getting and whether we're going to spray. I would, I know there's a couple other council members, but we've also invited Jennifer Leydig and Leah Lopez, who were here last year to talk about some of the, the issues they had. So they're on that, but I would...
Okay, let's go and do a council and we'll get Jennifer. Go ahead, Mr. Bono.
So do we plan on starting spraying in the city? Because I have noticed on Santa Fe drill, major, um, hatching of mosquitoes are getting bad. Does the city plan on starting?
That's what I'm looking for, uh, to make some, some direction.
All right.
Williams and...
Uh, the question, the question I had, um, and Mike, this is maybe, maybe you can answer this. I know last year we had the, the proposal, and it sounds like you were... I may be going to speak about that again, but, um, biologic controls for mosquitoes. And I, I don't know how effective that is, but, um, that swallows things of that nature. Have, have we, um, reached out to cities that have employed that to see how that has worked for them? Or, or what, um, what the investment would take? I mean, and if, if possible, can we use it in conjunction? The other question I had, um, and this would be for, uh, Aaron and Robin as well. Uh, when, when the chemical is applied, do the people applying it, do they have to be licensed? And, uh, also, do those, how do those people ensure that the application rate is in, uh, within specifications of the product's intended use?
I can weigh in on that. Um, the, the, the instructions, for lack of a better term, are very specific to, um, the, the type of mist that the machine is calibrated for. So the machines are calibrated to dispense the aerosolized liquid according to procedures. So we do, we do monitor and calibrate that, and so, so we aren't over spraying or, or underspraying that, um, in terms of...
And beyond that, so, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Um, and beyond that, this is not a chemical that is limited to a, an operator that has qualifications for applying it. It's not that dangerous of a chemical where we would have had to have, um, a permit to do that because some of those chemicals are, and you have to, you have to pass some criteria to be able to do that. This particular one is not, not that caliber of a chemical. So just for that sideline.
Some states have, um, you have requirements. And I think California, of course, is one of those states that requires, um, those that use this chemical to have, um, license. But they're pretty much, as, as Robin said, this isn't, um, I guess the most dangerous of chemicals, um, that, that you could choose in terms of pest control and mosquito control.
Anything else, Mr. Williams?
I have no further questions.
Um, one thing I was going to mention is that I, I think I would like for you people at the Los Angeles County Health Department to look into that Wonderside to get some information on it and its efficacy, if there is something out there. That way, if, if down the road, if we can switch, uh, and it does its job, I think it would be a good, you know, a good tool to have in our, in our ballots. I think it would be worth a lot to look into. I think Mr. Chu answered, asked this question about trapping. I know typically with West Nile, uh, the trapping that you guys have done usually in, what, August or September? Uh, is that something that you probably will start to do around that time?
Um, I'll, I'll speak to that a little bit. We will do the testing and trapping based on data from the CDPHE, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, when there is high rates of West Nile virus. So until that point, we don't do that. We have the equipment to do that, but we, we don't do it at this point until we get direction. If we get some positive cases in this area, then I think that would promote that activity. But at this juncture, that's not where we're at. But we would totally let the state take the lead and give us direction on that.
Okay. Any other questions for council? Go ahead. Uh, let's go on to, I guess, Ms. Leydig. Is there anyone else?
Uh, I think, uh, Ms. Lopez has her hand raised, Mayor.
You would, uh, put, and, uh, he will give you the floor to speak?
Hi, council and mayor, thank you guys so much for having me speak. Uh, Jennifer was not able to make it tonight, um, so I'm here alone. Um, I would like to kind of touch on, I had something prepared, but I guess, um, because just kind of working off of some of the things that the Health Department, everyone has been talking about. Um, so to clarify what the city has been using per Mr. Beech in our meeting last year in, uh, July of 2020. The city uses a chemical called Aqua Gore 2020. Um, it is a mercury-based chemical with a PBO, a polybyte oxide. Um, and these two chemicals together are, um, considered by the Environmental Protection Agency as likely to cause lung and liver cancer in human beings. Um, as long as, and also there's been a lot of linkage to autism spectrum disorders as well. So I wouldn't say that these things are entirely safe. And I completely and fully understand that the city mosquito abatement project was created to combat the West Nile disease in 2003. And luckily, according to the state of Colorado's website, we have had no, um, cases of West Nile disease for the past three years. They have not put out 2020's beta yet, but 17, 18, 19. And that's wonderful. It shows that the web is doing, is working. But the issue that I am taking is that when, um, excuse me... when, um, excuse me, when the city started spraying in the early two thousand, the mosquitoes were can, you know, considered at a code red level because we were worried about West Nile disease. We didn't start the mosquito abatement project because mosquitoes are annoying, which they are. Nobody likes them. We did this specifically for management of the West Nile disease. And continuing to spray on a weekly basis is still considered the top most code red level. It's much like issuing a state home order for COVID. And without trapping our mosquitoes and without testing to see if they even have West Nile, and mind you, of the fifty species of mosquitoes that are in Colorado, only the curax mosquito is the one that can carry the West Nile virus. Without proper data to see if we even have a problem, there is no reason to consider using methods that are a code red level when we might be able to downgrade and use, um, effective measures, much like the Larvicide that Mike was talking about. It is called, um, I'm probably gonna say it wrong. It's a bacteria, bacteris fungus. It goes by VT. And it doesn't cause them not to fly. It causes them to actually eat this bacteria and then the larvae actually don't, um, mature into full mosquitoes, um, and die. And it is much more environmentally friendly. The other issue that we take with, um, the Aqua Gore twenty twenty, with it not just being the fact that it could have really detrimental effects on human beings in the town and we've been using it very liberally for over a decade. Um, but also the environmental, um, aspects. It is highly corrosive, like they said, to, actually I don't think anyone's brought this one up yet, to our burger species, mainly our crustaceans and our amphibians. And our crustaceans and amphibians actually do eat mosquito larvae and can actually help the problem. The problem is is that we've been applying this so liberally for so many years that we probably, we have no data unfortunately, to see that our liver species might have actually been harmed by all these, you know, decade plus of spraying. My thing is that I don't want to stop spraying if we have a West Nile outbreak. That, of course, is not my aim. My aim is to use our data from trapping to see if that we can downgrade to use just as effective and also less toxic, um, chemicals instead of spraying. There's multiple, um, cities in the Front Range that have completely stopped spraying and they have turned their city mosquito abatement program from one of spraying to one of community management and education. And the truth is, is that when you look at the data, people protecting themselves from West Nile disease using mosquito sprays, um, making sure in their backyard that they dump out old tires, that they, uh, treat standing water that can't be dumped out with, um, the VT. That is are just as effective and actually more so. Let's take the city of Longmont, for example. They actually even had a COVID death in twenty nineteen, not COVID, excuse me. I got COVID on the brain, I'm a nurse. They had, um, a West Nile death in twenty nineteen. And yet they did not spray once in twenty twenty for mosquitoes because they did testing of the curax mosquitoes and their, the curax mosquitoes never had enough of a level to warrant spraying. And that's pretty much what I'm asking for. I'm asking for us to really deeply consider spraying the city with chemicals that can have much deeper reaching on our community health. I mean, this stuff is known to trigger asthma attacks. And just think about the possible environmental issues that we're doing when we can downgrade if we don't have a problem.
Well, you know, uh, one thing I wanted to say is, you know, this was brought up, like you said, last year. And I remember mentioning to Ms. Leydig at that time to get with the Health Department and I came with Mr. Valentine for an alternative. Uh, did that ever happen? They met with me and Tom Beach, uh, Jennifer and Leah and unfortunately, all the information, I left with Tom Beach and I couldn't find it. Okay. Bob just couldn't find it, so. Uh, the, the second thing that I wanted to say is, you know, the city could, the county could stop spraying. Uh, the thing that exists is that you can go to Big R, grocery store, Walmart, and they can buy the same product over the counter and they will spray in their own homes. So it's, it's either we do it or they do it and, and do it en masse. So I, I don't really know if that's, not spraying is really the answer.
Well, sir, I really understand that and I agree with you. We cannot control what someone does on their private property. But what we can control is, um, the inadvertent side effects of spraying globally over a whole community and not really, um, not really paying any wishes to the people who don't want to be sprayed. If people want to spray on their private property, please by all means, property rights. But at the same time, there are places in Texas where they're actually suing the city property owners because the overspray is going on to their property and that's their property right to not have their property sprayed. So I understand what you're saying, but it's, that argument is two-sided.
The other thing, you know, I've got, got one other question from Mr. Gregor here. Uh, one thing that I'll just say is I know that Upper Island, when the city sprays, we don't see the guy come around spraying until ten, nine, ten, ten thirty. So I'm not sure what time they actually start, you know? They actually start out at like the, uh... They start out at about nine o'clock when, you know, when most people are indoors already, so. Anyway, I, I got a question here from Mr. Greg, from Mr. Gregor.
No, I, it's not a question, it's a comment. So I took it upon myself to call somebody that, an employee of the city who actually does the spraying. And I asked him, I said, I want the truth. Have you ever had any health issues since we started using this, uh, spray for the mosquito population? And he said, I do not. I don't have any health issues that would be connected to the, the insecticide they use. He said, as a matter of fact, a couple of times when I tried to adjust the sprayer, I sprayed it directly in my face. He said, and that was about two or three years ago and I didn't, I didn't have any issues with it. I just wanted to see if anybody is gonna show signs of an issue with this insecticide. It's absolutely gotta be the city employees that get it first. They're sitting there right there. I just wanted to give you that information, Lee.
Mr. Valentine, do you have any other comments?
I understand. Um, and I'm glad our city workers haven't done it. But I think I'm mostly advocating for our most vulnerable populations, which, like I said, this stuff, this correctacyne has been with Parkinson's disease and cancer in the elderly. And there are a lot of scientific research data that backs this up. And I completely am so happy that our city workers have not yet shown anything. But low level of pyrimethazine has been shown in scientific studies to actually, low levels over many years, cause Parkinson's disease. Do we really wanna wait to see if someone gets sick?
Valentine, do you have any? Um, no, Mayor. I just, I, I appreciate the conversation and you see the, uh, dilemma that we have as we get the calls from public saying, why aren't you spraying? Why aren't you spraying? Um, so that's why I brought this forward. Um, I don't know the answer.
I, I do, I do think, I do think it's really, uh, an important distinction between the spraying being necessary, uh, for a nuisance. And I would venture to say most people view the mosquito spraying as a nuisance situation. Um, I know this is anecdotal. I'll try and make it short. Um, and sorry for over-personalizing this. Um, my brother has a pool in his yard. Uh, my son was absolutely eaten alive by mosquitoes. He also has autism. Um, if it is true, the study support, uh, and I have read that, that that mosquito, uh, spray causes autism, I would choose the mosquito bites over autism every day of the week. Um, that being, uh, the other argument was, um, you can, you can buy these chemicals at Walmart. You, you can't buy the same chemicals at Walmart. Um, they're a lower grade chemical. I, I, with a very limited, um, check that I did, they're a lower grade chemical than what were available using of the twenty twenty. My point is, if we're doing it for nuisance spraying, I think it makes a lot more sense to have the spraying be done on a data-driven basis. Um, i.e. do we have the species that causes West Nile? Is West Nile present? And if it's not, we should either extremely curtail the, um, spraying or limit it to larval control. That's my opinion.
Let's get to the thing.
I'll chime in and say that the Culex mosquito is present and that is the mosquito that, um, spreads West Nile, so.
Okay, yeah.
Yes.
And the, and there have been cases in the past in, in Los Angeles County, so, so the mosquito is here.
Yeah, the mos-, yeah, agreed. The mosquito is here. It's just, do these mosquitoes, are they tested positive for West Nile? And if they're not, why are we giving the most aggressive treatment available? Why can't we downgrade to a least aggressive treatment?
Let's get some, I think Mr. Valentine wants...
I would, I would, I would submit that because of our increased moisture this year and the accumulation of mosquito, um, we are, we're, we have a higher level of possibility of West Nile based on numbers. So, you know, that's what we're, we're employing in, in our, our direction that we're going. So, you know, I'm just saying that we should be proactive instead of reactive.
Let's get some, no, let's go ahead, let's go ahead. We gotta move on. Uh, I think we've heard a lot of information, but I think we need to get some direction from council to, for Mr. Valentine, starting with Mr. DeBum.
Well, I feel the same as Councilman Gregor. If the insecticide spray that the city's using is non-toxic, then I believe that, uh, you know, and you really, over a period of time, when Fake Sugar came out, who knew what the ramifications were gonna be twenty, thirty years later? This could be a long-term toxicity that could build up over a period of time. But for right now, I guess, uh, it's gonna have to be.
Mr. Gregor?
I, if you, if you weigh the two sides, I, I would weigh the... There's, there's one caveat I'd like to put in there, Mike. Just to make sure that if, when we spray, the people that absolutely do not want it on their property, if it's possible, I know it would be probably difficult if staff would not spray areas where people are, uh, about not having it.
What's over there?
I, I think, um, I tend to agree with Councilman, um, Williamson that whatever we do needs to be data-driven and not just what we've always done. Because I, I think Ms. Lopez brings up a good point that we did this because we had a crisis. I don't know if we've ever changed the way we do things after that, once that crisis was abated. And maybe we do need to be more thoughtful about the way that we do mosquito abatement. And also I think we can do a better job, just the city and everyone in general, to know how to prevent them from forming on your property. You have to be diligent about not having standing water. I, I don't let that happen at all. Um, so, I, I just think, that, I, for Mr. Valentine's sake, I just think I would encourage you to, to put some very, uh, uh, real thought into what we're doing and, and get a sense of if you feel like what we're doing is necessary for our conditions.
Mr. Shu? Uh, I kinda agree with Mr. Gregor in that, um, kept up, you know, some spraying. I, 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 my, I live in an area where, well, it were, and it's there too. Uh, we got an arroyo there and I mean, we got mosquitoes everywhere. And, uh, I, I agree that if somebody doesn't want it sprayed by their house, that, that would be fine, but I, I would be for the spraying.
Okay. Mr. DeBum?
I think we need to get on the spraying. I think we need to be proactive about this. Uh, we're way more likely this year with the amount of oyster and more standing water to have cases of West Nile come up. Um, if the population drops down and it dries out, I can see not spraying. But I think we need to get on some spraying and get this mosquito thing nipped in the bud.
Okay, Williamson. Um, I, I still maintain that it really needs to be data-driven. Um, Aaron brought up the point that the mosquito is here. So it'd be nice to know if the virus is here. I know that may not be possible. But I really think it needs to be data-driven. Um, and secondly, I think we should really make a concerted effort to, um, look at ulterior, uh, treatment plans, whether it's the Larvicide, uh, the biologic, uh, approach. Um, that swallows if it works, um, from, again, from my limited checking, I think it does, but it would be easy enough to reach out to cities that have implemented that and see. So I would say it needs to be data-driven. Now we need to really look at ulterior methods, um, and, or chemicals. The Wonderside, the biologic controls, um, and then the Larvicide. But that's my opinion.
And I, I believe that we need to, to spray, uh, I think also that, you know, if we, just like last year and the year before last, uh, the mosquito population was way down. And I think it could happen with the amount of heat that we're getting now. If that continues into the future, we could maybe see a drop in the mosquito population, at which point in time we can curtail the, you know, the spraying at that point. Uh, and if, like that, I, I think an ounce of prevention is, um, better than a pound of cure, so at this point in time, so. That give you an idea of where council wants to go? Thank you. And I will, uh, I will get with the Health Department on the, and versus the Aqua Gore. And I, I think if you work out, really look into this Wonderside to see if it has an efficacy and if, uh... Aaron and Robin, can you look into that more thoroughly with that Wonderside and get some data for us?
Uh, will do, yes. Um, I'll connect with, um, I'll connect with the, um, the, the state epidemiologist and the state vector biologist and chat with them about that. Uh, and do a little research about the chemical you're using. Um, yeah, we, we, we'll, we'll look into it.
Yeah, yeah. I'd like to say hit the rush, but if you can put it on a, on a hot rush, uh, cause I think it'd be something of, uh, extremely important at this point in time. Anyway, thank you everybody for, for the input tonight. I think it was a good conversation that we had and needed to have. Uh, so we will go ahead and move on to, uh, item two, uh, item three B. Uh, Ms. Clark, planning administrator on our Historic Resources Survey Plan. Ms. Clark, are you with us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Um, the Historic Preservation Commission will be hosting a virtual community meeting this Thursday, June seventeenth at five thirty PM to present the Trinidad Historic Resources Survey Plan, which is funded by a certified local government grant of twenty-five thousand dollars from District Colorado. As a part, the city is required to document an inventory of historic resources within our community. And a plan is undertaken to provide direction of commission as how best to begin this process. The historians have prepared the plan for Tom and Lori Silence of Front Range Research Associates, who also completed the two thousand and one intensive survey of the Corazon in Trinidad's historic history. Erica Wordso of Clear Story Preservation also assisted in preparation of the plan. The goal of the plan is to assemble the surveys that have been completed in the past and prioritize areas of town containing historic resources for the commission to focus future surveys on. The commission would like to invite council to attend this meeting in which the historians will present the plan and be available for any questions from council for the community. I believe I just provided the plan to each of you and I'd like to draw your attention to a few areas of particular interest. So on page sixty-three, there's, um, recommendations for the Corazon district and priorities for future surveys. Page ninety-one, brick streets and stone retaining walls of Trinidad are discussed. Page ninety-three, um, lists some potential individual resources. And page ninety-seven is estimated costs for the prioritized surveys. The commission believes council will find this plan is a valuable guide to protect Trinidad's historic resources. I hope you'll be able to attend the meeting, the community meeting this Thursday night. And I will set up, uh, meet that meeting at five thirty on Thursday night.
Okay, five thirty.
It's on Zoom, right?
Did you say five or five thirty?
Five thirty.
Georgie.
I have five too.
Georgie.
Did we freeze again? Yep, we lost it. Here comes Kim, we're in trouble now. Oh, jeez.
The ghost there. Look at it and, uh.
He looked at it and he couldn't figure it out?
Are we in recess officially?
No.
No, the red light is on. Tom's recording, really, wasn't that true?
I had some comments. Hey.
Yeah, Kimberly.
I feel like Diana White.
Go, Kim.
Okay, we believe it's Diana now?
Okay, Diana, thank you.
Anyway. Georgie, your question was what time?
Okay, it's Thursday night at five thirty and it'll be a virtual meeting.
Okay. Well, I think we have any questions from Congress and Mr. DeBum? Georgie, are you familiar with Sarah Adal? She's an outreach specialist with the History Colorado State Historical Fund. She said there's. I'm sorry?
Yes, I do know Sarah.
She's, uh, there's three million dollars that's gonna be awarded to statewide projects this year. Just wanted to ask you if you were aware of that.
Um, not specifically three million, um, I get, notices of grant opportunities quite often. But thank you, I will look into that.
Well, yeah, I interviewed her on the radio and she said there was, three million dollars will be awarded to statewide projects.
Okay. Okay, I will check in with that.
Okay. Well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Gregor.
I, I just looked at this report, Georgie, it's pretty extensive. And I'm gonna wait until the presentation Thursday night, but thank you for doing that.
So, who's?
Thank you. Go on, you can add.
I had the same thoughts. I haven't had a chance to read it, um, thoroughly, but I have gleaned through its main points and it's very good. I think it will be useful information for our community to have. So thank you, Georgie, and I will, uh, make it a point to be there.
Mr. Shu.
Uh, uh, same thing, Georgie, you did a nice job on that. I, I'll have my questions.
Mr. DeBum.
Good job, Georgie, thank you.
Congratulations.
Same as the proceeding, thank you.
Uh, Georgie, the couple of questions I had is, like I said, I, I read through as much as I could, there's a hundred and forty-eight pages. Uh, a lot of reading, but I did read through a lot of it. And, uh, there's some really interesting historical information in there as well. Now, the question that I have though is, um, this, 'cause of all the numbers of properties in town that could be applied for historical preservation or, uh, if we start getting a lot of people wanting to apply and they get passed through, could it possibly inhibit some of the reconstruction of some of these projects or some of these homes or buildings? Uh, this, 'cause I do know that the State Historical Society creates a lot of issues whenever there's reconstruction of historical-type buildings. So do you feel like maybe there could be a possibility of, uh, it could inhibit that, that prob- that process down the road?
Well, the landmarking process that council set up is a voluntary program. So, uh, property owner needs to apply for the local landmark status. If, if they apply and they are granted that status by council, then if they shoot, if they want to alter the structure in any way, the exterior structure, in any way that might, um, lower the historical significance that earned it the landmark status, um, they would have to come to the commission to seek approval for that alteration.
Okay, so it, it could be a problem for some of these people. So I guess the best thing to do is when people decide that they want to apply, that they are completely informed that that's a possibility, that, uh, it could be, uh, it could be an issue with the Historical Preservation Group. Uh, the second question I had is, uh, in your report, in this report, it showed that in twenty twenty-one and twenty-two, uh, State Historical Fund grant application is out there. Are you planning on doing, uh, any applications for any of that, those funds?
Uh, this survey plan was prepared with the, um, by a grant from History Colorado. Um, so, this, the commission is looking for all ways to fund, um, any processes that will further the historical preservation efforts.
Okay, have, have you looked into that, uh, the twenty twenty-one and, or maybe you've already utilized that, or maybe the twenty twenty-two, uh, grant application to see what's available?
Um, no, I haven't looked at that specifically. I've been looking at the certified local government grants.
Any other questions from council?
I have nothing.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Clark. And, uh, like I said, there was a report and I, I planned to continue reading it because I thought there was some pretty interesting historical information. And just the basic plan is, uh, I think needs to be read a couple of times, 'cause it's pretty extensive. Thank you very much. Mr. Valentine, getting it, I have nothing to add, we, okay. Okay, on to item four, petitions or communications are all written. Do we have anyone either in the audience that wants to speak? Yes, sir. Can I go ahead and stand up?
Yep.
Address, let us know who you are.
Okay, so, me and this fun lovely lady here are hoping to start a mural in town. I've participated in several murals and art projects around the city and it's been one of the best things about Trinidad. And I've lived here my whole life and everybody else has too. Um, but recently I was looking through the brand-new We Are Orbits and I found a couple of things in it that I was hoping could be addressed, um, as somebody with experience in this sort of field. Uh, the first being the fifty percent slash two hundred feet wall rule. Um, I was just wondering why that was put, put in place because I was a little bit confused and I felt like it wasn't exactly practical for most mural work. Uh, the second being the three hundred and fifty dollar rule. Um, being a young artist, I have, I can't charge as much, um, for my murals. I'm not a professional. Uh, same goes for any other educational or nonprofit programs. A lot of materials are donated, um, and we'd actually end up being, we'd have to pay to, in order to paint a mural. Uh, I've been truck, paid four hundred dollars, split between two people, for a mural before. With the three hundred and fifty dollar fee, I would have not gotten any money from that. Um, not that that's our goal, but I don't wanna lose money either. It's very discouraging to a lot of young artists. And I feel like as an art district, we should be encouraging as much creativity as we possibly can. Um, and especially in the new generation, um, because I don't know how much longer I'll be here or some of the other artists who have worked on projects in the past. Um, but that's all the things that we had to ask.
Mr. Mayor, can we get her to state her name for the record, please?
Uh, Riley Bacher.
Riley Bacher. Uh, Riley, uh, I'll tell you what I'd like for you to do is, uh, typically a comment, uh, we don't comment on your comments at this point in time, but what I would like for you to do is to get with Mr. Downs, 'cause he's the one that put this ordinance in place for us. And, uh, that fifty percent wall rule, he'll probably could have an answer for you. And then the other part of it, if there's a question, he can bring it back to council for us to have a conversation on. But thank you for bringing that information. Anything else that you would like to add to the conversation?
Those are the two more things.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody listening in, uh, tonight would like to comment? Okay, that's enough. Let's go on to item five, our consent agenda approval. Item five A, approval of the regular meeting minutes of June the first, twenty twenty-one. Item B, approval of special events permit request involved venus and spirituous by A R Mitchell Memorial Incorporated at one fifty East Main Street for June the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Uh, Ms. Shoemaker, are you listening in?
I am.
Okay, thank you very much. Item C, approval of a special events permit request involved venus and spirituous by Mon Carmel Health Wellness and Community Center at two, two nineteen, that's, uh, between two nineteen and two forty-nine North Commercial Street for July the eighteenth, uh, twenty twenty-one. Ms. DePaula, are you on with this tonight?
I am.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, item D, approval of the bills for one million, three hundred and fifty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty cents. Item E, approval of payroll, June the twelfth, twenty twenty-one, through June the twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. The amount of three hundred and eighty-four thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and eleven cents. All entertain a motion?
I move, do you approve the consent agenda?
Okay, second?
Second.
Call a vote, please.
Verna?
Yes.
Verna?
Yes.
Randa?
Yes.
Oluwun?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Langton?
Yes.
Wakeup?
Yes. Item six, public hearings, we have none tonight. Item seven, unfinished, we have, we have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business, first reading of an ordinance granting local landmark designation to the property described as original town site, block one seventeen, part, part of lot, I guess it's part of lot one, seventy feet by a hundred and sixty feet, original town site, block one seventeen, more than twenty feet, at least seventy feet of lot one, City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, for Colorado, and setting a hearing date for consideration of sale ordinance to six P M. on July the sixth, twenty twenty-one. But I have someone to introduce, please.
I'll introduce.
Have a motion, please.
Some vote?
Second.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Clark?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, Tom Murphy submitted an application for a landmark status for his property located at three thirty-five East Main Street, also known as the Chappelle House and Malair Murphy Funeral Home. The Historic Preservation Commission has reviewed the application and forward it to council to schedule a public hearing on July sixth and take final action on the application.
Okay, uh, that is also known as the Chappelle House. Uh, Mr. Murphy, do you have anything you want to comment on?
Um, I, I thought we were gonna do this at the next meeting, so I wasn't really prepared, but, um, that building has, has been a part of my family for forty years and it's been my baby. Um, the rough, the outside's a little rough, but, uh, the inside's fine. We're putting a new roof on probably in August or September, um, so it's gonna shine again. But the inside, as many people know, it's been in there, it's, it's perfectly fine. Um, I'm excited to do this and, um, it's deceiving, uh, because people don't realize how big it is. It, it's, it's five levels and there's nearly fifteen thousand square feet when you add in the carriage house. And I've, and my father before me and, and my mother have spent the last forty years putting, pretty much every penny that we had into make it nice. And my goal here is just as it would be done with, the other buildings have been fixed up long after I'm gone, this is going to be a gem for the city. And, and we changed the name because we're gonna be doing other things besides funerals. We always have. We've had, uh, graduation, weddings, um, political meetings, movie festivals, comedy festivals. It, it's really quite a venue. And, and so, um, I'm really excited to do this and, and to be quite frank, part of the reason I'm doing this is that it will allow me the, to turn around and the money that I'm about to spend on my roof, I will be able to apply for tax credits, which I can turn, turn around and do other, do other things to help improve it. So, so that's my goal. It is, this thing, long after I'm gone, is going to, and will be a gem. And as I told you, Mayor, eventually we're gonna have a ribbon cutting when more COVID's done and I'd like to give tours because I think people are gonna be quite shocked, um, by what's inside. So, I'm very proud and hope you guys get to it.
Any questions from council, Mr. DeBum?
No, just, uh, I'm all for it. You know, the Chappelle House, uh, can't wait for it to be deemed or designated as a historical landmark.
Thank you.
Mr. DeBum.
I have, no, I have no questions. I, I read all this and it's pretty impressive, Tom.
So, Mr. DeBum.
Yeah, I enjoyed reading the history of the building and that adding to what I know already and I'm excited for this to happen.
Mr. Shu? No, none, good, good job, Tom, I think we make it out.
I have nothing.
Mr. Williamson? No, Mayor. The only thing I have for Mr. Murphy, and all I wanna know is there, is the tank? 'Cause it was, that information was in that, uh, survey.
Yeah.
That, uh, there was a tank full of water that I guess that was.
It's, it's still there.
It's still there.
And, and what happened when we were doing the remodeling is, uh, the, the unfortunate thing, it was lead-lined. So, uh, I left one afternoon and we were turning on side because we were gonna turn it into a bookshelf. And we, they crumpled up the lead and the, the wood was as black as this, um, from the coal. You know, from the coal burning in the house. Thought, we'll, we'll lacquer it or do something to make it look really cool. I left for a few hours to go do something. When I came back, some of my workers decided to do me a favor and sand it down. I, I, I came back and I'm like, I, I wish you would have asked. But, but it's still there, it's a bookshelf. It, it's moved just a, a foot off where it was and turned on its side. I, I think one of the sad things about that, Chappelle done the water system here, is, is it's, is I, I have every article that's written about my building and about Chappelle. And he was here for about ten years and he lost two children, young children, while he lived here. And I think it's likely that, that him and his family were lead poisoned. And when Chappelle moved to Denver and built another house, um, it was, it was even more grand than this, but before Dana Crawford could get to it, it was torn down. And Dana told me she knew Chappelle's grandson. So, um, a- and the, the lore that we heard when we came here, and, and some of this is documented, but this part of it isn't, is that Chappelle had a rock quarry here, it, or somewhere around here or New Mexico or whatever, and he was bidding on the state capitol. And they say that that house was built to keep him from bidding on the capitol. But some of the stone from this area in his quarry is part of the capitol. And, and I have it in articles that were written.
See, and that's what's so interesting about the history of Trinidad. I mean, the deeper you look, or the more you look, the deeper it gets. And it's just, it's, it's amazing the information that, and I mean, that survey, uh, there was some other stuff about the Chappelle House there too, but other historical or other buildings in Trinidad, so it's very interesting. So, anyway, uh, call a vote, please.
Uh-oh.
Oh, boy.
We froze again. Here comes. Can I have an eight?
You don't have any money to talk about it.
Lead was, uh, water system was lead-lined.
Were you filming yourself the whole time, Tom?
I, it wasn't on camera, no.
Okay, I think we're gonna have to redo all of that.
Yes.
I'd have to move out front.
That's how you got it for it.
I thought, I thought Georgie told me it was gonna be next to the meeting.
Yeah, the second reading and the public hearing, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Be ready for that, too.
All right, again?
Double your pleasure, I was right now. Double your pleasure.
Just gotta keep you guys happy for a couple of weeks.
That's right. Two more weeks, don't get mad. So we redo that, we, we do the call, uh, what's that?
We're doing it, looking at this one.
The reading? Uh.
Recording in progress.
I, where, where did we?
We asked for a roll call. I didn't hear it on my computer.
Yeah, so, you know, just. So let's go ahead, you have a roll call, please, on that?
Give me a minute.
Okay.
Wait for Diana to give it to us.
That's right.
You need to get her some water.
Yeah.
Yeah, really.
We need to fix this.
Verna?
Yes.
Verna?
Yes.
Randa?
Yes.
Oluwun?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes. Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item eight B, first reading of an ordinance and ending section fourteen dash forty, forty-five, administrative adjustments of chapter fourteen, land use code, article four, zoning ordinance, the code of the city of Trinidad, Colorado, to expand upon permissible administrative adjustments and set in a hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to six P M on July the sixth, twenty twenty one. But I have someone to introduce, please.
I'll introduce. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, okay.
No, no, I insist.
Alright, then let's have a motion. So moved. Okay, second?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Valentine, I think you're on it.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of council. Um, we adopted the new land use code pre-Covid, and um, we were kind of sailing along, and nothing, you know, no building was happening. Um, when things have started to open up, uh, we've, we've kind of come across a, a little bit of a glitch in our code. Uh, it has to do with, uh, section fourteen sixty-seven, where, uh, we state all residential structures requiring a building permit must have a roof pitch of equal to or greater than six twelve. So, anybody who comes in and wants to do any kind of building, an addition, a garage, anything, that kind of, uh, kicks in the six twelve roof pitch. While we've had several where, um, a couple of di- uh, people wanna do a, a remodel addition to their homes and extend out their roof pitch, which would match into their four twelve roof pitch, but our code says six twelve. Um, so we're kind of locked into that. Um, the only option now is, okay, if you go to the planning and zoning, you can get a variance on the roof pitch. That seems kind of bureaucratic a little bit, you know, when they, they have their four twelve roof pitch, you're making me do a six twelve on a, so it doesn't, doesn't make sense. So, we're working through that process, but through, uh, uh, Georgie and our, our planning consultant, Carrie McColl, we came up with this, uh, kind of a administrative adjustment. It adds, uh, the roof pitch to our administrative adjustment table, and what it says is reduction in roof pitch that is similar and complementary to or compatible with the principal building. So, um, an addition wouldn't, you know, I, administratively, we can say, okay, you're matching that. Uh, we'll continue to look at the overall six twelve roof pitch. I think the intention was if you were doing new construction, historic character of the neighborhood, but then again, like on Nona Avenue, all those roof pitches up there are four twelve, branch style homes. And we're saying, well, you can build an infill lot here, we need six twelve. So, we'll work on that, but just to get us through this portion to help people out, um, I know you've probably all heard from somebody along the line saying we're, we're too cumbersome, and, and we wanna kind of fix that with this administrative adjustment.
Mr. DePaula?
I really don't have anything, just the method behind the madness, the six twelve, I don't understand the rationale behind that.
Um, I should. I'm sorry.
No.
Yeah, I should have. So when, when we did the comprehensive plan in twenty seventeen, for that was the comprehensive plan, and then redo the land use code, um, historic, uh, integrity of Trinidad was kind of the driving force behind that six twelve. Um, it kind of is a, a steeper pitch, an historic pitch on, you know.
So it's more aesthetics?
Yes. On Colorado. We have a lot of homes up there, but then again, we have a Spanish style home up there, right in the midst of, with the flat roof, so we're trying to, uh, you know, we'd like to take everything back through the process with planning and zoning, and then city council, when we come up with a good, uh, solution, but I think personally, to help people out, this is what we're suggesting.
So in the future, will that be mandated, that anyone that comes in and wants to build has to have that six twelve?
That's part of the process we're gonna work through.
Yeah.
Currently, it is.
Screen.
No, just a clarification, it's for existing homes that have the four twelve that are in the.
Uh, well, I, I mentioned four twelve, but it, what we, the way we worded, similar and complementary to or compatible with the primary structure. So, yes.
Just a clarification, there's three ages now, B C, A D, and P C, pre-Covid.
Right?
So moved.
I think it's a common sense, um, solution to it, and I support it.
Mr. Sho, no questions, please.
So, you know, I've always thought when the codes were six twelve, back when I was building, it was crazy to have to come in and get variances. I think it should go more than just for additions, Mike, that goes to buildings. If someone comes in and wants to build in a neighborhood, you should be able to match what's in the neighborhood, and if the neighborhood is a four twelve neighborhood, someone should be able to get an administrative instead of having to go through the process of planning and zoning. I've always thought this should have been done for a long time, I'm glad to see it addressed, Michael.
Mr. Williamson?
So, um, for clarification, Councilman Goodall's, uh, concern about matching the neighborhoods on new construction, will it be that way after, after this, or?
This is more toward, uh, additions and matching primary structures. Uh, we've worked through the six twelve in certain neighborhoods with an ordinance, but we wanted to get this through to help people.
So, so after this is in place, presumably it goes through as in, after July sixth, if someone's doing an addition or a garage on their property, they'll be able to match their existing pitch?
Correct.
A gar- garage, a detached garage included?
Currently, we have, and I didn't bring that, but there is a provision in the code for accessory structures to match the principal structures, but not additions.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, so I, you mentioned the, the, um, flat roofs on Colorado. Would it, would it be administrative to go all the way to a flat roof so long as properly constructed and matched the additional structures on the property? Okay. I haven't, I have no further questions.
I think this is a good approach. Uh, I, I think it's just, that's one of the big problems that we've been hearing all along is, you know, maybe some of our codes and rules and regulations might be a little more cumbersome than necessary, and I think to be able to do it administratively rather than doing it to the ordinance change and, you know, work with planning and zoning, I think it's just, uh, it just takes too long, and people need to be able to move along the project, especially now with the way prices of lumber are. They wanna get on, they wanna get a booty.
Yes.
And, uh, the sooner that they can get it moving, the, the cost will less money. Uh, so I think it's, I think it's a good approach. Then, and of course, like you guys in Colorado, you know, some of those roofs, they're, they're twelve, twelve pitched, and some of them are even greater than that, but I think that six twelve, I think, is a legitimate sign for new construction. Mr. Donald, do you see any problems with setting precedents of any sort within the?
I don't. I was just going to, well, I was thinking that, you know, there are a lot of things that are in the codes that we don't know the rationale for, that the, the simply, right, I mean, we, we don't know. So, it's a good question, what is the rationale for that rule? But man, there sure are a lot of people who complain about that, and they blame the city. They blame the city and city officials and say it's your rule, and, and there it is. That's my, that's my incisive analysis.
Staff has been taking a beating.
I forgot, yeah, I forgot.
Well, you might just tell staff that if you get any calls, come forward to say that we were working through that.
Yep.
On, on July the sixth, so. Any other questions?
Call a vote, please.
Valona?
Yes.
Beno?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
O'Leary?
Yes.
Chu?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item nine, council reports. Mr. DePaula?
I interviewed Christopher Smith, Ph D, uh, Trinidad. He, his residence is here, I didn't know that. Uh, he's been contracted by the University of New Mexico Press to produce a nonfiction academic book on Bank Night of America cinema during the Great Depression, and it, it includes the Fox Theater and the Schuler Theater, so I thought that was pretty interesting. And this was during the Great Depression, so, and I'm gonna interview him again, because he's gonna open Trinidad Trends July second, the old Haydad Building, and he's gonna have an assortment of collections and art pieces, and a bunch of really cool stuff, so have to do an interview with him again next week. And, and I interviewed Linda Baron today. There's gonna be an independent state parade on July fourth at ten A M. Uh, missed out on the veterans parade that was supposed to happen, but the health department regulations wouldn't allow that to happen. That was a co- uh, for May, that was scheduled in May. And, uh, follow, it's gonna, there's gonna be a wet parade following the dry parade. So.
Hopefully it'll be a warm day.
Bring your soukers and your buckets of water. Yeah, hopefully it's, it's one day, but, uh, and that's all. I, I didn't go to the last, uh, Fortwood, Los Angeles County Veterans Council meeting, because that was the night we had a work session on Monday, so I don't know what happened there. I didn't, I haven't talked to Bill Phillips. But other than that, everything else is good.
Screen.
Uh, last Thursday, the mayor and Mike and I went to the quarterly, I guess, meeting of the CPW.
It was annual.
Oh, it was annual?
It was an annual meeting.
Wow, I'm impressed. Because it was Trinidad, I mean, really.
Second time in a row?
Really. And the governor was there, and, uh, Mike and, um, Mayor and I presented different portraits of Fisher's Peak, and I'll let the mayor talk about it more, for people that helped with the development and purchase of Fisher's Peak for a state park. And I thought it was very sad that we couldn't give ourselves an award that day, because we were giving everybody else an award. But this is my acknowledgement for the staff and to Mayor Rico, and all of those individuals that were on council when this first came up, that you had the fortitude to do this, and I, I think we should keep one of those paintings for City Hall. Yeah, you might. But it was very nice. Um, there was also a Zoom meeting with the county with a building, uh, company today. I was trying to watch it, and they were having this many technical difficulties, if not more than we do here. So it was really difficult to listen to what they were saying. It was really muddled. But anyway, Mike was there, and I'm sure he'll be able to give you a more educated, intelligent report on that than I am. It's, the, the county is also trying to find ways to start affordable housing in the county, so it's, it's something that we have to look at. You know, I have questions as an insurance agent, and, and about the program and, and the buildings, but I'll, I'll let that go. And finally, I'm a liaison for the Historic Main Street Board, but unfortunately, their meetings coincide on the same Tuesday that these meetings do, and I always have prep meetings for this meeting, so I didn't get to go. But I do know that they are planning a lot of, uh, events for the Fourth of July, and I know they're asking for volunteers. They're, I guess, they're in conjunction with the Triggers Game, they're having a lot of events over at the park. So if anybody out there wants to volunteer to help meet Historic Main Street with different events, they have pie eating contests, they have watermelon eating contests, so they're, they're working very diligently. So, that's all I have.
So moved.
The, um, Space Create Oversight Board met, and, um, Wally's doing, uh, continues to do a good job trying to get a contractor working to finish that space out. It's been a tough, um, uh, road to hope, but he has sat down with the contractors that they're thinking of doing it with, and gone through it line by line, and taken out every possible thing that they can to get the cost down. There's some money that he's aware of that could be coming through the state, uh, through DOLA that might be helpful to finish it out, and so that's what they're working on. Um, the thirty thousand dollars that, uh, were, was assigned to that, um, oversight board is gonna be used for, under Wally's supervision, to get some coworking infrastructure in there, because that's, it'll help the city staff who are doing their, like, printer, and as well as people are coming in and doing, uh, coworking eventually. So, that's that. And then the Arts and Culture Advisory Commission met, and they continue to work with Huns group on getting the base together for the, the horse sculpture, and I guess there's a new idea on the base that, um, is coming together that will be, they're not gonna go through the Pablo place, they're gonna find something that they, he's, Huns is gonna work with, that they found at the dump, so, that's good, because we're pretty loves that. Um, and, uh, the circle has, has been approved, so that's gonna go down there at some point. Um, the O X O, that word is still trying to figure out where that will end up going. That's the thing that's in the roundabout right now, is gonna go somewhere else, possibly at the triangle at Capitol Hill. Um, but they are really on top of it and moving things along, I want people to know that. They also met with, uh, Gary Hustling, who has, is, uh, has offered to donate a sculpture for the dog park, and so they're working with him, and they're communicating well on that. And I think that's about all that I have.
Okay, Mr. Sho?
Oh, only, I got a couple of things here. Mike, I had some of the, I know it's a pain, excuse the language, but the golf, uh, a couple of people from the golf course approached me, and they were having some issues with trees up there that are kind of dangerous now, and I was on the tree board last, well, still, we, we don't have a board, but we have some people on it. Anyway, we're trying to get, but there's some money available that you told me there was like two thousand dollars or something. Can we use some of that to clean up some of the trees up there at the golf course that are dangerous on some of the tees?
The, um, we can possibly, um, utilize city crews to get up there. Uh, they have approached us. Um, it's just tough driving our big equipment on the, on the areas where they're wanting the trees cut and pulled out, and we can't drive across greens, and.
You guide the ball a little bit, straighten it.
Right.
Like a nice right to the wall.
Uh, I made note of it, and, yeah, we'll get on that.
And the other thing, I'd like to compliment the city for doing some good work on some of the puddles, especially up in the Allen Valley area. We had some issues up there, they got it taken care of, and it, it looks really good, and I, I hope they continue to get more filled out.
We finally, uh, uh, Walsworth, San and Gravel finally fired up their plant, so we're able to get asphalt, so you should see more and more patching going to go, yeah.
Mr. DePaula?
I have nothing.
Hey, Mr. Williamson? I have nothing at this point. Okay.
I have a few things. Uh, last week, on Tuesday, I went to Denver, and I attended the Colorado Preservation Inc., uh, awards dinner, that's actually through Dana Crawford. City of Trinidad got an award. We got an award, but I was not able to bring it home. They took it from me. It's somebody else to do it. Uh, but anyway, we got an award for the Space Create Project, so that was kind of interesting to go to. And, you know, anytime that you attend an event like that, uh, there's a lot of, you know, people up there that you can talk to. People from OED, there was some people from CHAPRA, uh, Rick Garcia was up at DOLA, uh, Carol was there. And in talking to some of these people, just to let you know, is that, uh, there is a lot of interest, uh, possibly some more money to do that, uh, community space down there. They're really, they're, you know, they're really pushing for money for Trinidad right now, uh, for a lot of different reasons, and that was one of them. Uh, I'm not sure if they might be working with them already, but that was one thing that they, they mentioned to me, which was very, very encouraging for me. So anyway, uh, attended the, uh, Greenway Foundation Community Engagement, I was here last, I think it was Thursday, too. Uh, that was pretty. That was pretty interesting. Jeff Shoemaker was here and Dean. And quite a few people had showed up, brought their little thoughts to put up there to see what our recommendation from the community would be. Things kind of neat to see. Attended, like I said, the CPW Annual Meeting that they had here, and it was an opportunity. It just so happened that on Tuesday night, I found out that the governor, Mike, made it down here. It was yes, it was no, it was yes, it was no. I found out Wednesday night that he was going to be here finally, so he showed up, and it just was a good opportunity to give, you know, back in February or March, council agreed to purchase some pictures of Fisher's Peak that Bill handed out, had them out to the various people that have helped in the process of purchasing and moving this forward. We were able to give out about 11, I think about 11 of the photos, the pictures. And there are still some that are still outstanding. TPL, Nature Conservancy, and JJ Autry, and there's a couple of other people out there that weren't out there, so we'll get them, get those pictures in your hands at some point in time. Friday, I attended the Action 22 in Pueblo, and one of the things Mike I'd like to do, because I know that Talitha was there, and so was Wally, and I'd like to probably, at some point, to sit down with all three of us with you and just kind of get, what did we get out of it? There was a lot of information, because it was, it started at 10 for the Action 22 program. But then in the afternoon, there was a lot of information about the American Recovery Act. The big thing is, is, it was kind of disappointing in a way, because there's money that's coming out of the American Recovery Act. But the rules still haven't been filed yet. They're still working on the cotton picking rules. So how do we apply for them? And that's the big frustration that it sounded like people are having. So that's why I wanted to sit down with Talitha and Wally to see if they have a different take than I have on it. So I think we can set something maybe later in the week. What was interesting there, you know, we had actually some state legislators there. Don Valdez was there. Cleve Simpson was there, or Senator. Anyway, Dave Young, the State Treasurer, was there and had an opportunity to talk to him. He and I got into conversation during lunch, and we got to talk about just monies that the city has and the state has. He was saying that the state wants, that he'd like to set up a kind of a rainy day fund like we have. And I told him that we had one. I said, but the problem is, is that now all of a sudden, we have to designate where that money goes to. And he looked at me with, and he says, what do you mean? And he had some serious questions. So anyway, I'm going to call him up and ask him, because I said, this is what our auditor asked him, is that we had to do.
Yeah.
And so I said, well, I'm, so I'll give him a call, you know, have further conversation, see what he has to say. Because we didn't have a little opportunity, a lot more opportunity to talk. But I just like to hear his take on what is, as a state treasurer, I would think that he'd have some pretty.
He would know what he's talking.
So I got a cell phone number from him to talk to him, so I will talk to him about that. Senate Bill 238 is on the governor's desk to sign. 1215 is, it passed through the Senate and the House. It has not been sent to Denver yet, but I'm sure it will be sent. And I'm not sure for those in the audience, just information is, 238 was the district for passenger rail. That's Senate Bill 238. 1215 was the Quandhe invention bill where the city of Trinidad, one side will probably get around $250,000, $350,000 a year for the next three years, I believe. So.
These two individuals over there in the corner are all, both retired corrections officers.
Yeah, no.
So they'd be interested in.
So anyway, there's, yeah, we, you know, actually, what's gonna happen with that, the Trinidad Community Foundation is going to be the local, because what it is, is it has to be a local foundation or a third-party administrator. And being that the foundation doesn't have everything, but they're interested in participating. So they are going to participate with a third-party administrator on Colorado Springs, the Latino or Hispanic group that's up there. But they're going to need to put a coalition or a group of people that could give some input into the, into the, into it. So if you're interested, she is. Being that you're from the, you know, you're from the. The prison systems, but I think it'd be interesting for you to be involved if you could. And here's a very interesting, I got a, I got a call yesterday from Mr. Bluezer. And she told me that there is a woman that moved into town six, eight months ago. Her name is Dawn Siebel, and she has painted all of the paintings of the, painted portraits of the, I'm not sure if it's, I know it's firefighters for sure. I'm not sure if it's the police who that lost their lives.
I think it's just the firefighters and 9/11.
And 9/11?
Wow.
And what she wants to do, it's like a traveling show, and she wants to put it here in Trinidad. And it's gonna be August, September, and October. And I talked to her a little bit, and they're working around maybe having a special night for the firefighters, advertise it specifically for the firefighters. I think that would really be cool. Maybe try to, we might try to get the governor down there, might try to get a legislator down there for that event. So anyway, we had a little, little conversation on this. She was telling me that it's traveled to a couple of other places already. It was in New York, and it started out with three months, but they had such success with it that they extended it to 10 months. So it could be that maybe it could extend even further than the three-month period. It just depends on what kind of interest it creates. But I told her, she was waiting, she had gone and moved pretty much from 90, I guess, 95% of her board, and she said, to wait for when we're called. But I think this is going to happen. And what's gonna be interesting is, that's, it'll be here during the time of the San Fris Trilays and that other event. So it'll be another opportunity for people that are coming into town to be able to see this. I think they advertise it. But I think that that is really cool to have something like.
It's the 20th anniversary of 9/11.
And so I think that, and I looked at it, 9/11 this year is on a Saturday. So I think if they can do something on a Saturday, just have a special event for 9/11, I think that'd be tremendous. That is all I have. Mr. Valentine.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Couple of things. I received an email from DOLA for an application for our American Rescue, the COVID Relief Funds from the federal government are going through the Department of Local Affairs. I got the application. I called together a finance director and Brittany and Audra, and we have applied for our portion. I always, all along, saw a number of 1.76 million. It's actually $2,616,799. But it's coming in two tranches. It's like you said with Action 22. Is it gonna be like the relief fund everybody got, and it's just in your account and you spend it? We don't know. We don't know what it's tied to, what we have to report, how it's spent. But we applied for it, so I just wanted to let you know that.
Well, that's different, and you know, there was.
We'll put it in an interest-bearing account until we figure that out. So that, that's in motion. If you recall, we had this whole DOLA roadmap to recovery for the region, and they were looking for region plans. We agreed to go, let council of governments that's there, with Walsenburg, Werfino, Los Angeles, Trinidad, let them be the lead. They applied. They've been approved and accepted for this recovery. And again, we don't know what's involved and what, you know, and we've got to, as a, Walt is going to be kind of facilitating that with the projects. We're talking broadband. We're talking housing. But it's gotta be a regional thing, so we're, we'll be putting that plan together. Once I find out more, I'll let you know. The, after the presentation on, on last work session, I don't know if things run together anymore, but the Fox Theater and the, you know, the possible tower. That whole presentation was done for public input, for the conservation easement that's on the exterior of the Fox and how we move forward, and if the structure on the side detracts and all this, and whether or not the marquee is significant or other. So there, there's been a request in several, the Historic Preservation, our Historic Preservation Commission actually put in, you know, after they heard that presentation, they had some points that they put together and sent off to that. And just as a heads up, as a city, we want to also do that, and I'll run that viral with council on thoughts for that. So we could send something on that. I sat through a presentation, kind of a preliminary concept that they're, they're building these, they're SIP panels, structural, structural integrated insulated panels that, you know, they've got aluminum sides on them and foam filled, and they've got this kind of patented system that they presented to the commissioners. I sent out invites to all the council. It was kind of short notice, but I attended, and it's an interesting concept. Some of my questions, will they meet the R local IDC code? The insurance questions on, you know, foam panels with aluminum sides and, and the concept is as interesting, especially with the cost of materials that are happening, so they're, they're, they still don't have anything here in the United States. They're working through all the processes with all of our regulating agencies, but they happen to have a little bit of a connection with Trinidad. They're from Denver. And so they've just, they just presented the interesting concept, a little ways to go, I think, and say, worked through that, that process, but. Hans Druck has actually, the, the manhole base that we were waiting for from the precast company just wasn't coming, wasn't coming. We had several out at the landfill that were actually made for projects and never used. The state project actually said, here, here's these manholes. We're not using them. You want, we took them. They have big holes in the side for storm drain and sewer and everything. We went out there, Bob did with Hans, looked at him. He picked one. We took it to his place. He's filled the hole in. He's actually sculpted. I don't remember, council did see the drawings where he had this sculpted, I'm not an artist, made it look like it was floating with the horse. He's already done that. We flipped it over for him. He's close. He's got the brackets, so that's real close. And now, for the bad news. You may recall this tree over at the library here that has been, you know, abating for a lot of reasons. Well, I'm, I'm here to tell you that city council, we're gonna have to cut it down. It's lifted the sidewalk. It's starting to lift the street, and with the storms we've had, we're actually getting leaks into the basement through the foundation, and you could almost see where it's pushing against the foundation. So I wanted to give you the heads up because I haven't pulled that trigger yet, but when I do, you will hear about it. And we will hear about it, because, I mean, it's a beautiful tree. It's just right there too close to the, to the library, and it's causing damage.
So it is. It's damaging a historical building.
Right, yeah, so, just to let you know. And with that, if you have any questions?
A couple of other things that just prompted my mind, you know, the SIP panels that you were talking about, they've been around a long time.
Oh, yeah.
As a matter of fact, some of the buildings out at Pootie Canyon were actually built with SIP panels. And afterward, the process and all that stuff, so they're, they work. They do. At that point, whenever they were building, 15 years ago, they did meet the local energy codes and all that stuff. So I'm sure they have to upgrade, they had to upgrade to meet the current code as well.
They were pretty iffy about construction costs. Like a 2,400 square foot house was 300, 350, 350. That's not enough total cost.
The other thing that came up while I was at the Preservation Inc., me, I think the other night, is that they asked a question about the marquee. They asked that, and I told them that, they were saying, what are you guys gonna do with the current marquee? And I told them, I'll let them design that. But they showed us that they were gonna take that marquee and put it over to the new extent, the new addition. And they were real happy with that, so.
The Historic Preservation Group, our commission, thought maybe rather than put it up on that building, put it inside and have a display. I don't know if it'll fit. I mean, they, but consensus that I got from council and from the Historic Preservation is they'd like to see it go back to the original wrap, new wrap structure.
Yeah, the original, but to do addition to.
Right.
The last thing that prompted it was that that American Rescue information, there was a gentleman that was, all he does is broadband. There's talk about broadband, and dollars that are out for front broadband. I asked him, I said that if he was aware of all of that fiber that's being run up to Gomai 25, that is, from what he understands, he said that is CDOT's fiber. And I asked him, I said, if he was aware that Trinidad would be able to tie into that at some point in time, and he said, yeah. So, so I've got to get his name. I didn't get his name that day, but I can get it through Sarah Blackhurst. And having done a conversation, we might even invite him to maybe give us a presentation on broadband, because he, that's all he does. So I'll invite him to come down.
That's the color recorded, blue or orange?
He thought it was, oh, yeah. He thought it was a pink or colored system. I'm looking, should rethink your colors. Blue and orange?
Right now, right now. Notice that right away.
Do you want silver and gray?
Yes, please. That's right. That would be pleasant. Mayor, council members, I will do my reporting in executive session. I just want to say that when I chat with young writer Lee Focke, I promise to be nice. I want, I know, I know. I knew some of you might worry. I really want to see a mural. I want to see, you know, I mean, not like try to be overly solicitous of any, you know, mural application. I know, of course, that's up to you, but it would be nice to see something go forward with the process. I want to show that my ordinance will work. So, but anyway, that's all I have, and thank you.
Okay, item 11, executive session for a conference of the city's attorney for purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal question under CRF Section 24-6-42. For the liquor enforcement matters of potential litigation, motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Second?
I'll roll.
For how?
Yes.
For how?
Yes.
For how?
Yes.
Olive tree?
Yes.
Yes.
Lion's head?
Yes.
Yes.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Yes.
Yes.